The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 regular City Council meeting of October 9, 2024. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
I'm here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Councilmember Smith.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
And Councilmember Cor.
Here.
Welcome to all of you. In keeping with the council's resolution, public statements are now received at different times depending on the item. I will call on the city clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully for the correct time to speak. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it in the tray on the counter next to the speaker's podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on today's agenda or in a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you will be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit per speaker, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I will call for you at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully. If public statements become disruptive and I have to clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you will be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received two speaker cards. The first public speaker today is Dan Bartel, followed by Jesse Land.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself, and maybe just adjust the mic up a little bit.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Dan Bartel, and I'm joined today with my board president, Roy Perucci. We're with the Rosedale Real Bravo Water Storage District. Rosedale operates a number of groundwater recharge projects, one of which you might be very familiar along Allen Road and the Parkway. We have a long partnership with the city of Bakersfield, and we help benefit 10,000 Bakersfield residents by our recharge operations. We also partnered with the city on the TRIP project. The city had need for right-of-way through two of our groundwater banking projects, and the district granted those easements. I was asked my board today to come speak to the council, so the council is familiar with our Rosedale Onyx Ranch project. This project would result in more flow down the river through Bakersfield, which we understand is a mutual goal of the City Council and our agency. The water would come from us ceasing irrigation on low-value pastures in the Kern River Valley that Rosedale owns, and allowing that water run all the way down the river through Bakersfield and to recharge into the aquifer below. Unfortunately, after a successful start, litigation was filed by various Kern River interests. Given our favorable relationship with the city, we do not see the city as an adversary because it is clear that this is really driven by one Kern River interest that terminated the project in 2022. Prior to that time, city staff worked very cooperatively with us and seemed satisfied that the project could be operated without injuring any other downstream water users. Unfortunately, the right holder objected to the project for reasons ironically unrelated to water rights of the city. Now, the project is being litigated by lawyers making arguments that never previously have been raised by the Kern River interests. This could have unforeseen consequences to the water rights of the city. Rosedale is asking the City Council to reconsider this litigation and once again work with Rosedale to develop a win-win opportunity that would benefit the homes, businesses, schools, and farms within both Rosedale and Bakersfield. The Onyx Ranch would increase flows in the river channel through Bakersfield, not harm any other water right holder, and increase recharge to the aquifer. We stand ready to work with the city water department staff to make this happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bartel. Thank you, Mr. Perucci. Next speaker, please.
Jesse Land.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Jesse Albert Land, Jr. I was born down the street on the third floor of Mercy. I'm here to solve all of our problems and help the homeless and the people, 17 million Californians that are currently renting because they don't earn enough to qualify for a mortgage. At the end, I will tell you what the solution to affordable housing crisis is. And I'm also, I was born with dyslexia. I was hyperkinetic, and I experienced a thing called flooding where I'll just start crying. But it doesn't mean I'm sad. It's just a survival mode that people with ADHD have. So if you don't mind, I'm gonna play the recorded speech. Good afternoon. My name is Jesse Albert Land, Jr. I was born down the street on the third floor of Mercy in 1961. Today is my birthday. I am the one. Real estate investors are everywhere. They're ambiguous. They're even in this very room. Dimaxium has created an economic growth model, purpose-built, and market-driven to end the affordable housing shortage that our used car salesman in Sacramento has created. I've distributed the material to this board last week. I also gave this material to Karen Go in 2022, and I have spoke to the mayor, and unfortunately, it did not get through her filters. The solution to affordable housing is for someone to produce a house that costs $206,000. Remember, some people aren't ready to take the red pill. But if the 39 million Californians take the red pill, Dimaxium will show you how deep the rabbit hole goes. It's up to you. You need to make the choice. I'm only gonna tell you the truth, nothing more. If I could have a moment of silence to recognize the mental health issues that the state has, and a moment of silence for my dear friend, Jeffrey Tack.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions about anything?
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, that was our final speaker regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Public statements regarding the new business item, the land use item listed on the agenda, will be heard after staff's presentation. Madam Clerk, the next item, please.
New Business Item 3A, Land Use Alternatives for Bakersfield 2045 General Plan Update. Staff will conduct a workshop to explain and seek input on preferred land use alternatives for each focus area.
Mr. Helen.
Mayor and Council, we do have a presentation here, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Phil Burns, our Development Services Director.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. Today, we have a workshop regarding our land use alternatives, and this is part of our Bakersfield 2045 General Plan. And today, what we're looking for is comments, discussion, and confirmation of staff's recommendations. Alternative 4 is our preferred alternative to be included in part of the general plan. And for the record, we have received a letter today from the Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. We do appreciate their continued involvement in the process and really welcome their comments. Before we start the presentation, I'd like to acknowledge the team that's working on this project, Planning Director Paul Johnson, Principal Planner Roque Nino, and really special thanks to Associate Planner Jose Fernandez. He's spent a tremendous amount of work into this project. Today, we have with us from Rincon Consultants team, we have their project manager, Della Acosta, and Planner Bryce Haney to do the presentation. Hopefully, is there any questions? Help us answer them. With that, Della, could you...
Thank you, Mr. Burns, and thank you, Councilmembers and Mayor, for having me here today. I have some introductory slides to go over the project of the land use alternatives process. I'm gonna go through these rather quickly, since I think most of you have been apprised of this information. Feel free to jump in with any questions if you'd like me to clarify anything further, and then we will present the alternative 4 and look forward to your comments on that. So as far as the process of the general plan overall, we have finalized existing conditions and technical reports, established the vision, which I believe was the last time that I spoke with you, and we are now on the land use alternatives. Next, we will be moving into developing the policies to help realize the vision that the alternative sets. In this process of developing the alternatives, we weren't really looking at wholesale transformation for the entire city, because the existing land use plan can accommodate most future change for Bakersfield. So this was really more about aligning your already ongoing planning efforts with the general plan, and then reflecting community engagement and city goals, city council goals and vision. We do want to emphasize that engagement has been a very large and ongoing program throughout the general plan process. While we might not be able to talk to every one of the over 400,000 people in Bakersfield individually, we have used strategies that meet people where they are. We've covered geographic and demographic areas, and we are having meaningful conversations through a variety of methods to get that rich and detailed feedback. Some of these methods were, we did pop-up events in all seven of the council wards. We've done multiple focus groups with interested community members and businesses. We've done a participatory mapping online survey, so that people could drop their thoughts directly on a map, digital workshops and surveys, and in-person and virtual workshops. And to develop these land uses, we incorporated input from the community. So we, as I mentioned, we had the online mapping survey to vet those focus areas that were developed and what was needed in each of those, and we did specific in-person and virtual engagement in each of the wards and each of the focus areas around their needs and desires for the future of their community. We had seven focus group meetings where we met with key community members, local businesses, and organizations, developers, and the different departments and agencies within the city. And we have made every effort to provide inclusive and accessible engagement. So we had translation for non-English speakers, events at existing shopping centers, food banks, sports complexes, things of that nature, to try and reduce barriers to participating and make sure that we are hitting as many of the residents as we can. As I am sure you're aware, the currently adopted general plan includes, let me just set some context also for some of the key things that we looked at in this process. So as you're aware, the adopted general plan includes unincorporated areas. So our first step in this process was to refine the area for the general plan to include only those areas the city has jurisdiction over, so the city boundary and the SOI. We did incorporate the housing element information and numbers into this analysis, and then added some additional to help for covering the city for future arena cycles, given that the housing element is an eight-year cycle, whereas the general plan has a 20-year horizon, so to help cover any future arena cycles that occur under that 20-year horizon. We also looked at the capacity of sites for development and aligned the amount of land needed for the different uses and the key metrics that we looked at, so population, jobs, and housing, to ensure that there was alignment in what the projections show and what the land can provide. And finally, we considered access to amenities in these areas and other enhancements, and aligned those with the existing efforts the city is doing, the known needs, and the conversations we had with the community. We also, before we started on the alternatives, did a cleanup effort on the land use map to modernize and simplify that existing land use map. Because the map serves as the broad vision for land use over the next couple of decades, this was a really important first step to make sure that we could clearly see the needs and develop alternatives for consideration that reflect them. Whoop, I'm sorry. I just realized I wasn't, there we go. So we have these updated designations that have greater clarity and flexibility and are more simple to understand and implement with the applicable zone. So that just shows the cleanup. I know you can't read that, but it is in the memo. And that's what the resulting map looked like after we did the cleanup effort. Then we started on the actual land use alternatives process. So we have looked at focus areas, which I'll get into in a second, for the growth. We created alternatives, evaluated them, have presented them to Planning Commission, and we've spoken, I believe, to several of you about these, and incorporated that input into a preferred alternative. On the land use alternatives, we initially developed three alternatives for the areas that have most change identified, and we called these the focus areas. The report that you were given has a fourth alternative that's directly responding to the feedback of the Planning Commission and those initial conversations with you all. The metrics that are provided for each alternative are, I do want to emphasize, they are estimates based on the amount of land that was identified for each land use, and then the average person per household or employee per business type. It does assume that housing and non-residential build-out is at what we determine to be a realistic capacity, but the actual development depends on a lot of factors like market, developer, interest, site conditions, things of that nature. So it is a very theoretical exercise. The areas that we identified for change are areas that either were already identified for change through your existing planning efforts, or the community specifically wanted, had desires for change. The boundaries are generally aligned with existing plans that Bakersfield already has, known boundaries or other logical lines like streets. And I do want to say on the last bullet point there, that this alternatives process, as a reminder, is just one step in the process of looking at the land use map. From here, we'll go in with policy to help further define and shape the changes and the evolution of the city in the future. So the focus areas are up there on the screen. It is too small on my screen and on that screen to read, it looks like. But we have downtown, Old Town Kern, CSU Bakersfield, Rosedale Corridor, Gosford Southwest, Greater City in the Hills, Brundage Lane, and Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard, where they identified focus areas. So I'm gonna quickly go through what the overarching goal was of each of the four alternatives and those metrics, and then we'll really focus in on alternative 4 for each of the focus areas. And again, I anticipate this to be a very interactive process, taking your comments as we go. So, alternative 1 was really focused on preserving existing industrial development and employment-generating land uses, revitalizing urban core areas, and transit-oriented development. Alternative 2 was looking at where additional park and recreational spaces could be added, compact design and development, transit accessibility, so again, transit-oriented development, higher-density development, and mixed-use development. And then alternative 3 was mostly aligning with existing and ongoing efforts, again, with the transit accessibility, looking to instill flexibility for development, and then adding a research and development area around CSUB. And we have metrics associated with each of those. I do want to just note that those metrics did not, those numbers did not turn out to be too different as you're looking at them. So alternative 4, again, is incorporating the input from Planning Commission and conversations with council members. It includes some additional mixed-use corridors, enhanced transit accessibility, keeping the development flexibility as much as possible, and then the mixed-use research and development area was added to downtown as well as CSUB. So I'm not gonna go through each one of these for each focus area, but if you would like to see those, just let me know, and I can go back. I'll mostly focus on alternative 4. And the goal here is to get comments on, did we hit the mark with alternative 4, and is there anything that we missed that you would like to see in this alternative? So starting with the downtown core, this is really looking at maximizing mixed use along Chester and F Street, incorporating, as I mentioned, a research, technology, and education zoning overlay surrounding the high-speed rail area, formally designating the civic and governmental offices as public facilities, so that's really more of a cleanup, just to align them with what's there, looking at residential inflow north of Highway 178 and east of Chester, and then replacing some of the industrial with office and mixed And I can, at your discretion, I can keep going, or I can stop for comments.
Go ahead and complete your presentation. We'll go to the public, and then we'll come back to council.
Sounds good. Thank you. For Old Town Kern, we are looking at expanding the mixed use around Chester and the industrial area south of Highway 178, formally designating, again, the governmental offices, just to align with what's on the ground as public facilities, and replacing some of the industrial with office and mixed use. Greater City in the Hills is mixed use near Morning Drive and Highway 174 interchange and Kern Canyon Road intersection, highway-oriented regional commercial uses at the Kern Canyon Road intersection, and then looking at space for a neighborhood-serving commercial center on Palladino Drive. Rosedale Corridor, we're aligning with alternative 3, which I can go back to in a second, but adding additional designated linear park buffering the PG&E substation from the adjacent residential neighborhoods. So alternative 3 was looking at park space along that utility right-of-way in Northwest Promenade and allowing for mixed use in West Holloway, and that's the resulting map for 4. CSU Bakersfield is re-designating some of the office to mixed use on areas that are adjacent to the campus to allow more flexibility, and then allowing for an overlay that creates an area plan for facilitating research and technology uses that are close to the residences that are planned to be built. Brundage Lane expands the mixed-use designation along Brundage and north to Oak and east to the intersection with MLK Boulevard. Gosford Southwest is aligned with alternative 3, but has, we've reduced the size of the designated park space near Acres and have that as mixed use. And Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard aligns with alternative 3, but we formalized some public facilities designations for existing and planned schools, and designated some additional medium-density residential along the corridor, as well as aligning some designations with the housing element update. That is all of the focus areas. So the key questions for discussion from the council are, does alternative 4 best align with Bakersfield's future vision, and are there any adjustments needed to this alternative in order to carry it forward, or should additional considerations
Is there anything further? Thank you very much. And now we'll go to the public. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers for this agenda item?
Mayor Go, we've received one speaker card for this item from Sandra Melgoza.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Sandra Melgoza Placencia. I'm current policy advocate with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. As the City Council deliberates which alternative will best serve the focus areas, under the general plan update, we ask that you appropriately choose the alternative that will stop continuous harm to the MLK, Brundage, Lane, and Old Town Kern focus areas. Residents in these communities have been historically left out of very important processes such as general plan updates. It is vital that these communities have a say in what their communities will look like in 2045. These communities have some of the highest pollution burdens in the state, even reaching the 99th percentile for pollution burden. This is partially due to being located by major transit roads, but also due to the over-concentration of warehouses and industry in these communities. As the city plans the next 20 years in Bakersfield, we urge you to stop the over-concentration of liquor stores, smoke shops, warehouses, and industry in these communities, and instead facilitate the development of grocery stores, medical facilities, green spaces, and safe routes to school. Additionally, stopping the perpetual concentration of malignant industries in these neighborhoods will ensure that the city abides by its duty to further fair housing. According to the staff memo, the general plan update will solely focus on city limits. Pursuant to Government Code 65302.10, on or before the date for the next housing element, the city must update the land use element to include an identification of each island or fringe community within the city's sphere of influence that is a disadvantaged community, and include for each disadvantaged community an analysis of water, wastewater, stormwater drainage, and structural fire protection needs or deficiencies. While the city does not have jurisdiction and land use authority over fringe and island communities, the city must consider the community's infrastructure needs as the city determines the land uses so as to avoid potential impacts on disadvantaged communities. The city's decision to exclude spheres of influence in the general plan update can exacerbate environmental pollutions on these communities. We urge the city to include fringe and island communities in their general plan update and ensure they have compatible land uses. And we remind the city of its obligation to comply with SB 244. We are open to further conversations on our recommendations, and urge the City Council to adopt an alternative that will not further harm the communities you serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melgoza. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers for this item?
Mayor Go, that was the only speaker card that I received. Mayor, it looks like we have one more speaker.
Go ahead and call the speaker, please.
Wendell Wesley, Jr.
Welcome.
Hi. I think when we start to really crowd an area with housing that is already crowded, then everything that Sandra said is true. We're not even thinking about what happens to people mentally when they're all jammed into one area, one large complex, not to mention the cost of these large complexes if you're planning on building anything like that. Mixed use should be something that's small if there's gonna be mixed use, because anything large is just gonna add to the burdens that we already have, not to mention apartment complexes that are really large. You're gonna be using a lot more water. We already have a water crisis. There's gonna be less of a mental strain on our community if we put people in individual homes. People love to be in their individual homes. It's less stressful and it's safer, and we need to think about the safety of our citizens here in Bakersfield. That's very important. There are plenty of abandoned homes throughout Bakersfield, which the city could acquire, pick up those bank loans or whatever, and then sell them back at maybe a 1% loan to a nonprofit, so that we can make rental properties affordable and be able to sell a percentage of those at also affordable rate. As far as industrial areas, we're already environmentally burdened in that as well, so we need to be very wise on what industrials we put in these areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wesley. Madam Clerk, next item, please. Oh, no. Sorry, we're going to, just, now we're going to council for comment. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could turn to the one pocket that's actually in Ward 1, taking a look at the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, I'm in agreement with Ms. Placencia that the future of this corridor is really gonna focus on primarily residential and also, you know, including park space, some affordable housing, and hopefully, we can get some developers to come in and also produce some nice commercial developments, including a grocery store and other amenities. We had this conversation about trying to reduce as much as possible the amount of industrial land that's currently there and available, but it seems to me that alternative 4 has still quite a bit. Can staff walk me through maybe what some of the challenges were that we were facing that prevented us from doing that?
Councilman Arias, I know that the area close to 50
Councilmember Arias, I know that the area close to 58, we do have a county pocket that's also industrial also, and that area we did not change, obviously, because it's out of our jurisdiction. The areas, the other area, I believe, is down closer to White Lane, and we focused more on the property that was closer to MLK Boulevard and not as much the area that was further away. So it's something that we can look at further, if you like, but as I recall, there's only, within the city, there's only a few parcels, and I would look at Ms. Costa also to maybe step up and talk about that for a minute. Or Mr. Haney.
Evening, Council. As part of the process, we were looking at the industrial area just south of White Lane, and there is an airport land use compatibility overlay in that area as well, so we were looking at the increased noise and air pollution burden in that area as well.
Okay, great. I would just appreciate if we could take a second look at that and make sure that we're doing absolutely everything we can to minimize the amount of industrial land that's available there. If I'm not mistaken, I think we were taking a look at the flight patterns in that area and then also where we can and cannot have residential, so I think if we can get creative there, I think that would be great. And then, I totally agree with you, Phil, now that I remember our conversation, there were some larger parcels closer to kind of the wastewater treatment slash spreading field areas that it didn't make a whole lot of sense to convert, but I just appreciate staff's efforts to try and get as much residential, commercial, mixed-use, and park space as possible. And then the other piece, just to the north of the 58, I'm not sure what these designations are, but in other alternatives, I saw them as mixed-use. These are the two kind of triangular pieces that are intersected by the, what looks like the railroad, so I would just appreciate staff's efforts to take a look at those and also make those mixed-use and create some opportunity and flexibility for a developer if they wanted to come in and do some mixed-use residential and commercial. Fantastic. So those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll kind of keep my comments confined to my ward, but the only thing really in Ward 5 addressed here is the area around Cal State Bakersfield, which I would say I'm totally supportive of. I think we mixed-use, which simply, and I, can I get clarification, we're in the general plan, incorporating the land use, but will we also do the zoning or is it just land use and do the zoning later?
As part of the process, we will end up doing both. We're just, because you do your general plans, really your policy, then our implementation will get to the zoning and that piece down the road.
So you're saying the zoning comes later, when you get more specific?
Yes.
Okay. But nevertheless, the, if you look around Cal State, we have a number of very, two huge buildings that are now totally obsolete. The times change, you know, when the Tenneco built their building, they thought it was the most modern, green, insulated from the way the sun angles hit in the windows, they had, that was the latest technology in the world, and, not many years ago, maybe it was built in the 70s, but it's completely obsolete, which is, even the air conditioning system was this water thing that flows, that was absolute, when I was in the building, 20 years ago. So we have to keep in mind that that technology, we think, is the cutting-edge today, will be completely obsolete, and that will affect land uses, that will affect the amount of space we need, how we share spaces between residential and commercial. So the maximum flexibility is what we need, and I like the area around Cal State because someday both of those giant State Farm and the old era building, they may knock down. I mean, they don't make any sense at all anymore unless we just luck out and get a single-user, you know, if the university bought it and put classes in it or something, but those need to be redeveloped with much more square footage. Since land is scarce, the infrastructure is already there, when we don't use existing infrastructure efficiently, the costs just go up and up and up. So you have kind of a commercial village there around the university. I think it's great that, totally endorse what you've done. Not only the question is, I know, you know, most of the growth, at least, I still imagine the majority of the permits are all kind of in the west and kind of what we call southwest, which is really kind of Ming South to Taft Highway and keep going, and now it's partly Ward 7 and partly Ward 5, but was this scope supposed to include any of that being, you know, it's the biggest growth area, it's primarily residential, single-family, but I don't know if that's all already zoned perfectly or if we needed to convert more. You know, we want these same principles extended. When we're way down there, we still want commercial-focused, we want higher-density, closer to the commercial, we still want layering, we still want all these things that create, basically you create villages or little cities, whatever you want to call them. That's the way every big city has developed, is a lot of little cities are there that each have their own focus, because otherwise it's just a modus mass, so it will naturally want to have its little cities around. And do we deal with that, and is the scope in this, or am I off-base here?
Councilmember Freeman, this particular task is really looking at those areas within the city that we wanted to kind of revitalize, so those were those focus areas. We are also, as a separate discussion, discussing those areas that are within our sphere of influence, that are not within the city, and how we're going to handle those. That's kind of an ongoing task that we're dealing with now.
Okay, okay. Good point. My last comment, only because Councilman Arias mentioned something about airports. I've been to a lot of cities in both this country and in Europe. The massive problem in cities is when the airports, over time, have to expand, but there's houses out there. They were planned to be smaller airports, and look at all the ones in the United States that are now semi-obsolete, you know, San Diego, Washington DC, it goes on and on, when they had them close in the city, and the flight path problems for the people living under them, which, that ends up happening, and they shake the windows, the soot falls, I mean, it's everywhere, and if we ever have an opportunity to plan and avoid where flight paths will be as the city will expand over 50 to 100 years, we really ought to think about it, because it's a massive problem everywhere in the world, and it's no fun being under those flight paths, and you get a lot of political backlash, a lot of stress, and just a lot of conflict, but those airports have to be expanded as the population increase, and you can't just build new airports all the time. So it's just something long-range that we ought to be thinking about.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. I don't see any other requests to speak at this point.
Okay, I'll just make one.
There's, oh, just a comment? There's no receiving.
There's no recommendation to receive a file? Okay. Let me just make a comment, if I can, just want to thank Mr. Phil Burns and Mr. Paul Johnson for spending, I think, roughly two hours with me a few weeks ago related to this topic, in particular, related to downtown, Old Town, MLK, and the Brundage Corridor, and I appreciate you receiving my feedback and expanding that Brundage Corridor on both the east and west side, and also maintaining the council's commitment to double the population of downtown from where it was in 2018, at 5,000 people to 10,000 people in 2030. I recognize, you know, when we talk about infill and density, oftentimes it triggers some challenges in the minds of folks, and I do respect that, I think we need to work through some of those things, but, you know, we have to balance all these different competing priorities, right? We also are concerned about continuous sprawl and some of the impacts of that, and we need to offset it through infill development, and so I certainly support this alternative four and look forward to continuing the conversation along with the community, so I want to thank you for that.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Closed session, item 4A, Public Employee Performance Evaluation, City Attorney.
Okay. The evaluation of the city attorney has officially concluded, and the council has directed the city attorney to make amendments to her contract as discussed and bring it back at the next city council meeting and to the public. This meeting is adjourned.